Well, thank you.
You're speaking on cards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, thanks.
I know. This was hard to get council members say, who's agenda is doing?
Is that yours?
They've had all of the items on. I appreciate you coordinating your schedules.
Did any of you?
Good chief for the shape.
The topping.
We're just cooking.
Hi Dana.
Hi Dana.
Sorry, I thought you were laughing.
Oh, you did? You know, well, when you put out a bunch of these physical levels, it really makes you want to exercise more.
Oh, is it John?
I'm scared to go around City Hall.
Well, I thought we started a little earlier.
What did you do today? Challenge, challenge.
I told Jason, I was like, I can't count my steps right there.
Thank you, dear.
Oh, you bet. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I know you're even. How are you, John?
Well, I woke up to jazz this morning.
Did you like it?
I did. Mississippi blues jazz.
Have Mo as one of my favorites. Isn't he? Mona went to see him.
Oh, choose your own adventure.
And Mike? I'm just thrilled to see you.
The meeting will come to order, please. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Filosa?
Here.
Councilmember Baggett?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Corsey?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Here.
Councilmember Wales?
Excused. Okay, first item. We've got the big Y coming up. Jason, come on up.
Thank you, hello. So, my name is Jason Berry, executive director for the YMCA, I think I know everybody, but just like to put the face out there. Thank you so much, I was able to, I shared a letter with all of you and am here to formally make a request, so. A few years ago, the we went through a process to kind of look at what's next for the Y, and so. We did about a hundred community listening sessions, we talked to community members, users of the Y, non-users of the Y, leaders like yourselves, and just really talked through kind of what was happening, what was next, and so a couple of big things emerged, one being, we really need more spaces for young people in our community, and also the opportunity to do more to change health outcome. And so, you know, a quick kind of rundown, the Y has been serving, we serve about eighteen thousand people a year. We do a majority of it on about a fifth of the property that we're on, the Y was fortunate to have about seventeen acres donated from Boeing. We've been on that property more than fifteen years now, and so, part of our thing is, what do we do? We've got this hub of activity, we've got a ton going on, about eighty percent of the people that come to our Y receive some level of financial assistance in order to participate. It's one of the highest in the nation, so we feel like we've done a great job creating access. If you walk in the doors of our Y, you'll see multiple languages spoken, you'll see people from all neighborhoods in our community there together on a daily basis, and we're really proud of that fact. We also know there's still too many who are untouched and unable to access all the things that they need throughout the community. So, we've built a, we've started been doing a capital project, and we've developed, that is above an expansion of our Y, so. We're planning to add a small indoor space that's creating active, active spaces, so you think of kind of a children's museum model where, that's really focused on generating really active play for multiple generations. Some outdoor expansions, like a covered outdoor playground, today's actually a terrible example, but many days I could say, this is a perfect example, when it's plenty warm enough for families and kids to be outside, but it's just too wet, and so, we can economically kind of expand that footprint. And then some outdoor spaces that would be used for camps and those type of things, but also have year-round applicability. And so, really taking a bunch of spaces that are underutilized and making them, creating greater access for those in our community. But more importantly, being able to do programming that does things like shift health outcomes in our community, like giving greater access to those who need it the most. I will say that I think that this is critically important, I kind of, we talk about things like camp and outdoor things, and if people go, oh, that camp, that's nice, and I'd say, it's not nice, it's absolutely critical. It is incredibly important, and so, kids who are coming to the Y during out-of-school time, so after school and on the weekends and in the summers, when they're in school, they've got food, but when they're out of school, they don't, and so, we served three thousand meals to kids last summer. When they're out, when they're in school, they got PE, when they're out of school, if they're not at the Y, they're often sitting at home and not doing anything. And so, we have physical activity components, we're taking kids on incredible field trips to museums and to climb Mount Rainier and to do just amazing things, and. So, we really feel like this is something that is an absolutely critical part of a healthy community. I also know the lines of the city goals, so the Blue Ribbon Committee and all the things that are happening there are really geared at creating a healthier community. I'm going to do a quick handout if I can, and. And there's one piece in there I want to point to. So, the last sheet. So, the last sheet on there. It's got a couple of charts, and so, the one piece shows kind of lack of physical activity and how it leads to obesity, which leads to diabetes, which leads to diabetes, yes. And I don't want to, you know, we don't want to paint too much of a gloomy picture, but we know that our community is suffering by, in these types of outcomes, it's some of the worst disparities in the region, some of the worst outcomes in the state, and we know that creating access to physical activity is a huge, a huge thing to overcome that. Flip that sheet over, you'll see a piece that comes from King County, that's talking about social determinants of health, and sixty percent of what determines health is really access to ability to have healthy behaviors. And so, we really say like, this couldn't have been, this, we didn't, we didn't create this data point, but this data point speaks to the Y for us, and so, they're saying, we know there's lots of things that add up to what creates a healthy community, but we think this is one of the most critical pieces of it. The ask that's on that letter there is an ask for funding support of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we have raised about one point eight million dollars on a three million dollar goal. We have state, county funding, we have corporate funding and private citizen funding already coming in, and we have about seven hundred thousand dollars of asks out to friends that we feel really good about. So, with the city's support, we feel like this project is a reality and it's just down the road for us, and we feel really comfortable that we're going to cross the finish line and make it a reality, and when we do so, we'll serve an additional five thousand people a year, most of them young people or, and their family members. And just think it's going to be a huge home run for the community. I'll be quiet now. Questions or, you know, input at all, I'd love, but.
Jason, I have one question.
Yeah.
Since this was October domestic violence awareness, how many, do you serve domestic violence families in your, at the YMCA or children through that?
That's a great question, we definitely do, we, I mean, part of the thing I would say about the Y is we serve everybody, and one of the things we've done a lot of lately, I'd say is, so, you know, we're seeing families come from kind of all scenarios, including experiencing domestic violence. We've recently partnered with our Accelerator YMCA to add a mental health counselor, and particularly supporting young people who are experiencing symptoms or trauma at home, and that, you know, so, and we are seeing some families who are experiencing the domestic violence at home, that young people are serving counseling services. I'd like to say too that the Y is just sort of an everyday service, and so, a lot of families, it's respite care for a single parent who maybe escaped a domestic violence situation, and they're coming and, you know, drop the kid off, and you, a lot of families are using it to go work out, but there's several families that are using it just for respite care, because you just need a break some days, and. So, there's a lot of, I would say, secondary services to families that are experiencing domestic violence.
Thank you.
Yeah, Laura.
Yeah, Jason, thank you for being here tonight. You know, one of the things that interests me is, you know, as we help kids prepare, they have opportunities for educational and career guidance. Could you talk about that, what kind of services are available in the Y to help kids figure out what their future is going to look like?
Sure, so, we are, we're doing, I mean, a lot of it comes from kind of before and after-school programs. The stuff we're doing right now, particularly with our after-school programs, I think is really, we just, Laura can help me on this piece, we just, we just did a grant, received a grant that's going to extend, expand our STEM programming, so, in that after-school program, which we already have, so our Kids University Program, which is a class-based after-school program, already has a STEM component in it. We've all, but we just, we just did some grant writing and received some funding to expand that to serve more kids, but also to make the programming a little bit more robust, particularly around some of the engineering areas, and so, we feel like we're trying to build in the right kind of programming that preps students to have a successful career and gives them that path. We also do just a lot of direct work with young people, that kind of middle and high school age, especially middle school students, we tend to see a lot of, and, you know, a lot of that comes down to just sort of working with them to find their future and what that kind of looks like for them as well.
Sure.
And, you know, I would just comment that, you know, not all careers are academic-oriented careers, sometimes skilled trades are appropriate for our young people, and great opportunities there as well.
I agree, yeah, thank you.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? All right, thank you, Jason, appreciate it.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
So, we've, we've changed the agenda a little bit, everybody, we're going to bring up room number four, C as in Charlie, the BIA, to accommodate outside folks. So, let her go.
Okay, thank you, council, for letting us be here tonight. For the record, Josh Arnt with Economic Development, I'm the real property analyst, and seated to my left is Giovanni De Quatro, who I knew you all already know, owner of the Rainbow Cafe, but more importantly, of course, the chairperson for the Business Improvement Area. So, I'm going to start off real quickly, just give a refresher, the background of the Business Improvement Area or the BIA, and then, I'm going to turn it over to Giovanni here, who's going to tell you about what the, what the BIA has been up to this last year, talk a little bit about the Auburn Downtown Association, what they've done within the same BIA boundary, and then we will. Questions that you might have. So, just a quick, again, quick background, the Business Improvement Area is governed under Auburn City Code two point nine eight. It is a special improvement area or a special district consisting of roughly two hundred and thirty-nine businesses located within that hatched area that makes up the geographical boundary there. The general purpose of the BIA is to aid in general economic development, neighborhood revitalization, help facilitate cooperation of merchants' business and residential property owners, all for the benefit of the businesses, again, within that geographical boundary. The funds collected can be used for, only for specific purposes, there are seven of them, those seven specific purposes consist of acquisition, construction, or maintenance of parking facilities, decoration of places located within that boundary, sponsorship or promotion of public events, furnishing of music, professional management, planning, promotion within the neighborhood, as well as providing maintenance and security within the public places, and then providing transportation services for the benefit of the neighborhood. Excuse me. Assessments are charged to the individual businesses located within that, that boundary, they're charged at a rate of fifteen cents per usable square foot of the business. There is a minimum fee of a hundred and fifty dollars, a maximum fee of fifteen hundred dollars, so roughly that equates to businesses of a thousand feet. A thousand feet is the minimum cutoff for that hundred and fifty dollars, so anything businesses occupying less than that thousand square feet still pay the minimum. Fifteen, excuse me, ten thousand feet equates to that fifteen hundred dollar annual charge, so businesses occupying more than that ten thousand feet are capped out of that fifteen hundred dollars per year. That assessment is charged at the time of business license issuance or renewal. There are certain exemptions to those, those charges, and those would be charitable organizations that employ five or fewer full-time employees, government agencies, of course, businesses that occupy areas for less than twenty days, businesses that are wholly owned or subsidiaries or affiliates of businesses subject to the special assessment. So, an example of that would be like Multi Care over here, where they've got their Multi Care Medical Center, but within that, they've also got Multi Care Pediatrics, as well as a couple others, all located within that business, so, as, as a means of not double-dipping on those fees, they're just paid on that, the, under the one business, so, with their cap. And then, home-based businesses, businesses operating within our business incubator, and then businesses not requiring to get a business license under Title V of the Auburn City Code. So, those would be like purchasing agents, government representatives, or somebody coming in here to conduct business as part of a trade show or something like that. For the BIA, there is an advisory committee, it's a seven-member, seven-member advisory board. Those members are appointed by the mayor and then confirmed by council, and then their role, again, is to serve as advisory members to city council in the dispersment of those collected BIA fees. Currently, the members are the seven that you see there, again chaired by the gentleman here to my left, Giovanni De Quatro. So, with that, I'm going to let, that's the, over you, I'm going to let Giovanni take it from there.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you for having us. Just to go over a quick review of some of the projects we've funded and that we've partnershiped with, and so far to this date, we have spent forty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars for the year of 2019, twenty-five thousand went to the Auburn Downtown Association to put on different downtown events. We've also partnered with Code Enforcement and Parks, Arts and Recreation on the cabinet wraps and that you see on different corners downtown. We worked with Puget Sound Energy to switch out high-pressure sodium traffic lights in the valley, in the alleys from Auburn, Auburn Way through D Street, with brighter LED lights for additional security. We were able to partner with Puget Sound and get a good savings for the city. Increased the lighting in the B Street Plaza area, we purchased and installed some high-density lighting that helps keep it nice and bright, but doesn't shine on the businesses, and it keeps people from loitering in those areas because it's just way too bright, they, we can see what they're doing. Partnered with the Tourism Board to help updating and printing of a tourism map that you can find in most of the businesses downtown. And from there, I'll let Josh talk a little bit about the Auburn Downtown Association.
So, as Giovanni mentioned, twenty-five thousand dollars this year was appropriated to the Auburn Downtown Association, which generally serves the purpose of putting on those events that was noted in as part of those seven specific purposes that funds can be spent for. So, just a quick, I guess, overview of the Auburn Downtown Association, otherwise generally referred to as the ADA. The Auburn Downtown Association, it's a five oh, a five oh one C three organization, has its own set of bylaws, as well as an elected board. They are a no dues membership organization, but they are made up, the organizations that make up the ADA are those same businesses located within that geographical boundary that makes up the ADA. So, therefore, all BIA members are automatically included in part of the ADA as well. The ADA does have a special membership option that will allow for businesses located outside of that geographical boundary to opt in and become a member of the ADA, however, they do have to pay dues, and the dues that they pay are proportionate to what that business would pay if they were located within that BIA boundary. So, that fifteen cent per usable foot assessment fee with that, that minimum of a hundred and fifty a year maximum, maximum cap. And then, in the past, generally, the Auburn Downtown Association has served as the contract provider to the ADA to, again, put on those and coordinate those events that we've all seen and enjoyed downtown, so.
Okay, then, we'll go over some of the ADA events that they've had to date. They had the biannual pub crawl, the girls' night out, the ice skating rink, which was at the end of last year, the Beer and Wine Fest, this was the second year that we've had it, Pumpkin Fest, and the Main Street Festival, which was here just recently. Along with those, we just had the zombie pub crawl last Friday night that can tell you it was a big success, I don't know the numbers, but I do know that it was well-attended. Still, to come this year, we still have the Pumpkin Painting Fest, Main Street Trick or Treat, which is in a couple of nights, the ice skating rink, that's a potential, depending if the ADA can find a suitable place to set it up. The given wreaths, that's something that each business sets up, the ADA went around to different charitable organizations and found what people needed, and then there was wreaths set up in each business downtown, and people could take a name off of that wreath, bring back what they needed, because it would have a person's name plus what would help them for the holidays, and they'd bring it back to the establishment, and then we would give it to the ADA, and they would distribute it to the people that needed it. And then, the window and tree decorating contest, and the Shop Small Saturday event. Now, looking forward to 2020, these are some of the things that they are looking at to do, they're not, they haven't been decided one hundred percent because in November is when they're meeting to make the plans for 2020, and at that time, they will vote on what they're going to do, and then, in the BIA's November meeting, they will come to us with their plans and give us a budget of what they need for 2020. But some of the things that they are going to discuss in their meeting are the biannual shopping event, the quarterly pub crawl, and the four medium-sized events and festivals, and the Main Street Festival they're hoping to do annually, and they will repeat anything that was a success for 2019. For moving forward for the BIA, projects that we are currently being reviewed and considered, we're working on getting additional bike racks downtown, because our Main Street, especially during the summertime, is a, talking to the bike officers, is a main thoroughway for the bike trail, and if we can get enough bike racks up, our bike officers feel that we can get some of those people to stop, because those bikes are expensive, they don't want to leave them laying around while they're going through a store, so we need someplace where they can secure them. And so, we're working to put in additional bike racks, and we're right now working on designs and, of course, the budget.
And then working with the city to, as far as.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're working with the city to find out as far as installation and where we can put them and not, and still be within code. And then, expanding the downtown banners is another thing that we're going to do, right now, the downtown banners are mainly on Main Street and a couple of the side streets, but we want to expand it to include all the BIA area, so it's something that we've asked the city to find out where we can put them, how many poles we have, and then, once we find out how many we need, then we'll figure out how many we can do each year until we can expand to the whole BIA area. And replacement high-pressure sodium lights with LEDs, that is an ongoing project, we've started in some areas, and we want to identify some area, other areas that need LED lights and for security, just lighten it up. Additional security lighting along the north side of the Safeway parking lot is a good example of where we want to put some of these sodium, replace the sodium lights with LEDs, and the LEDs are much brighter. And we want, and we're going to continue our partnership with the City of Auburn Tourism Board and the Auburn Downtown Association, and that's what we're looking at to go forward. On the sodium lights with the LEDs, the city received a five hundred thousand grant, five hundred thousand dollar grant from the Department of Commerce that would allow the city to replace high-pressure sodium lights with LED lights. The BIA is potentially interested in providing additional funds to cover some of the replacement costs for those located within the BIA area. Traffic operations will provide numbers and costs and estimates at a future date, so we will know how much we can participate in.
To add to that, what we've, what we've found is, if the city has a project that they're undertaking, be it from a grant or, or something like the case of the traffic wraps, we find it much better, we're much better able to leverage those dollars that are collected through the fees if we can, if we can kind of add on to a project that's already being undertaken. So, like in the case of the traffic wraps, there was only so much money, well, if the BIA can pitch in money to account for those areas that are within the boundary, and that helps the city. and that helps the city extend whatever funds that they have available to increase their area, then it just, I think it makes sense both from the BIA's perspective, but also from the city staff perspective as well. So, in the case of, as Giovanni was just talking about, I spoke with some city staff, and we actually had them come in and talk to the BIA, the advisory board, and talk about this, the grant that they had just received. So, they will get back to us with the numbers and what that looks like, and to see if there's a potential there for the BIA to be able to partner with that. So, same with regards to any of the other projects that we're looking at, you know, what capacity does the city have to be able to work, and how can the BIA work with those other departments so that we can accomplish the goals, both of the BIA and those businesses within that, but then also the city's, just kind of their general goals and different projects that they're working on as well. That?
Yes. Thank you for your report, and I have a couple of questions, but I was really happy to hear that you're putting a new light there behind Safeways, because I had several owners that parked their cars underneath that light, and they have had their cars keyed, or they've had their windows spit at and stuff like that. So, it's really nice to hear you say that you're going to put some lighting out there. My other question is also, another business owner showed me that, right in front of her business, those big black lights that we have, there's metal that have been taken off of there on like about three lights, and she wanted to know if you folks were aware of those metals being taken out?
Are you, are you talking about the metal pieces on the bottom?
On the bottom.
Yeah, the bases, there was a manufacturing problem with those bases, and the city, they're still under warranty, and the city is taking them off as, as they can, and sending them in to have them resurfaced and repaired, and then they're putting them back on. So, the reason they're off is because they were manufactured improperly, and they have a coating on them, and the coating was starting to peel. And the reason I know this is right behind my building, one was coming off, and I asked the gentleman what they were doing, and he was saying that they were just taking them off, sending them in to have them resurfaced, because they were still under warranty, and then they were going to bring them back.
Okay.
That Ingrid did, how, that was, yes, we've been told about that, but I think your staff was aware of that.
Yes, I mean, that's generally accurate. The paint is coming off the bases, and so they are being removed and then refurbished by the manufacturer and then reinstalled by staff as time allows.
Okay. This, this owner called me up, and I went in there, and she showed me, so I told her I would, I'm glad you brought, you know, were here to give us a report. The other one, on the $45,000, is there any way you could give the council a breakdown of what you guys have, how you've spent that? I know you already told us, but it would be nice for, I personally would like to know if we could have a breakdown of it, so we can see what, you know, how much you guys are spending on each event.
We can get that to you. The exact figures, we don't have. I know $25,000 went to the Auburn Downtown Association, and then the rest of the money was spent on all the different projects partnering with the City of Auburn, and we could get that breakdown for you if you need that.
And my last question is, it's not a question, it's just a comment. I was wondering who was involved, who was responsible for all those boxes that are painted, because those are really beautiful. They're really nice. The casing, as you said, you partnership with the...
The city.
The city?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know that, so that is really good to know. Thank you.
Yeah, that was a joint, joint effort. I think Code Enforcement originally started it. Parks was, Parks was involved as far as commissioning the artists and whatnot, but the BIA contributed funds for, for, again, those wraps, or those cabinets that were within the boundary.
Really nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Larry?
Yeah, I was curious with the replacement of the high-pressure sodium lights, we, there's more light with the LEDs. What about the current, I mean, the electrical requirements? Do we save power using LEDs over the high-pressure sodium? Do you know?
Yeah, I'm going to turn that one over to...
So, in general, yes, LEDs use less power than the high-pressure sodium, and they're also a white light as opposed to a yellow light, so they're a little bit brighter. And so, we are currently working on the overall LED conversion for all of the city's lights, and so what they're talking about is whether or not we can partner to do some additional lights that aren't currently in that project.
Bike storage tweaked my curiosity, Giovanni.
Yes.
Have we ever thought of, has, has the ADA ever thought of going to service clubs and asking them if they'd like to get involved in a community project like bike storage?
I'm not sure they have. We can mention it to the ADA and see if that's something that they want to look at.
You know, we all know that service clubs are a great asset to any community. However, they're open for anything.
Okay.
And I think it would be a fun thing for them to get involved in brick and mortar on the sidewalks. Any other questions, council? All right, well, thank you very much, you guys. And hey, good job, ADA, BIA.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
No, it's a big job, volunteer work. Big job. Thank you. Now, we have the attorney, Mr. Gross, coming up.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Council rules. And it's quite a, quite a thick packet.
Fortunately, because of all the good work we did on the 30th of last month, there's only three items left in the parking lot for council to discuss. So, we'll talk about it if you want to follow along. It's on page 19 of the strikeout, section 12, 2.1. The question is, when does the council wish to have the vote for deputy mayor? Conversation at the last meeting was, and one option is before the end of the current year or after the beginning of the next year. Council members that were here before discussed the options, and one, there was some discussion, and correct me if I summarize it incorrectly, but there was, part of the discussion was it provide, if we have it before the end of the year, it would provide certainty, be ready to go on January 1st, and we can move right into the council. The countering argument or discussion point was that there's going to be new members on the council, and should we wait, should council wait until they have an opportunity to come in and meet their fellow council members and then decide who they want to leave as deputy mayor? There's no legal right or wrong, this is all up to the council. So, there are two options on page 12, and there's actually a couple of, a couple of other options. Option one is for, if you choose to do it before the end of the current year, my recommendation is that you do it sometime between 60 days before and the last meeting of the year. It gives them time to talk about it and make a decision. The option two is, in the next year, you can do it at the first meeting of the year, or you could also say sometime between the first meeting, but no later than, pick a date, the 30 days or 60 days after the beginning of the, of the new term. So, I await your pleasure.
Council, comments?
I'll start.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I stated this before, I think it's in the best interest of the council for a transition from a current deputy mayor to the oncoming, incoming deputy mayor, to do this before the end of the year and to do it at the last meeting of the year. That would be my recommendation. I think if we wait until after the first of the year, and we lose a little bit, perhaps, of the momentum of getting started and getting going, where basically everything starts on January 1st, and we be ready to go on January 1st.
Yolanda?
And I have to second that as well. I feel that, as, we have already been working with each other for several years and stuff, and I feel that we know each other very well, that we can select a deputy mayor instead of having the new members come in and choose a deputy mayor at that time. This way, we can start right in January, and we already have our deputy mayor chosen.
Larry?
I have to respectfully disagree with my fellow council members. I think we have new council members joining the council, they should have an opportunity to help choose that leadership, and I think we could see a majority changeover on this council, potentially, and to have, you know, that, the leadership, the deputy mayor selected by a minority seems inappropriate to me. So, I would think that we would want to consult with new council members and have them have an opportunity to have their voice heard in the selection of the leadership of the council.
Claude?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, John.
No, that's all right. I'm, I'm of the belief that the first council meeting of the new year makes sense to me to choose the deputy mayor. The deputy mayor's main function is at study sessions, and so the first council meeting of the new year, the new people on the council, and there will be three or four new members next year, will have to learn real quickly what that deputy mayor does. So, it's part of a familiarization project, and they will feel like they have had a voice in the deputy mayor, and it's a learning experience also. And I understand my colleagues' desire to be ready to hit the road running, but you have three or four new members next year that are going to need a bit to come up to speed, and this looks like a great exercise for them to understand the process.
Okay. Claude?
I respectfully disagree with each other. For me, for new council members to come on board and start their rules on January 1st and to immediately have a major responsibility of selecting a deputy mayor, when they have no familiarity with people on the council, perhaps, other than what they've seen over the media and perhaps what they've read, to me is something that puts them in somewhat of a uncomfortable position, and perhaps puts the rest of us in kind of an uncomfortable position as well. Like, we all know, we all said, you know, your first year is the fire hose treatment, and you're really learning, and John, you said it well, where you hit the road running, you're learning right away. And it's a lot to take on, as we all know, everybody who sits on this dais knows what the undertaking is, as a new council member, and what it means to, to get up to speed as quickly as you can. So, I feel it's more appropriate, again, to do this before the end of the, of the current year and with the current council members, and the new council members will have the opportunity the following year to select a deputy mayor.
Well, I can appreciate the fact that when I came on board, the decision had already been made by the council in December, and Largo was the deputy mayor at the time, and I, I had known Largo just by attending the council meetings as a candidate before, but it was really nice to be able to move right into the office and have somebody there as a mentor that would actually be able to exist already, rather than have, have to be a newbie on the council and have to get to know the other council members that have been elected. So, I would tend to agree with Councilmember De Corsi and Councilmember Trautmann, that we should do this before.
I, we have eight days before Election Day, eight days. I have not seen maybe one or two council candidates attend a meeting, a meeting, yet it's been suggested that we wait until January 1 to elect a deputy mayor. That doesn't even make sense. What do these people know about our local government? Nothing. Have they shown me any interest? No, none. So, we want to wait until January 1 for newbies coming on board, and they have no background of our local government, zip. Take me for example, if you want to hear my example. 16 years ago, maybe, no, 18 years ago, I ran for city council, and I lost by two votes. And it wasn't because I wasn't educated with local government. I attended council meetings, our four, at that time, four committee meetings. I didn't miss a, I didn't miss a chance to learn about our local government. And I, and so now, we want to wait until January 1. I think that is immature on our part. We want guidance. We have guidance right here on this dais, a lot of experience. So, therefore, I am for getting it done early. And Mr. Gross, I think rather than waiting, yeah, I'm here, just a second, rather than waiting until the last meeting of the month, I think we should give ourselves a little more slack time, like maybe another month, so that we can, you know, analyze this thing a little more, and just in case there's a hiccup and we can't get the thing taken care of by January, before January 1. So, I was thinking like maybe two study sessions before the end of the year, we bring it up again, maybe, or we bring it up on a, would it be on a resolution?
No, it's just a vote. I don't think we've done it by resolution before.
Oh, oh, okay. So, anyway, that, okay. That's, that's, those are my comments. Mayor?
To be fair, Deputy Mayor, when you became a council member, before you became a council member, the study sessions and the council meetings were not being televised and recorded. So, if you wanted to see how a meeting was, was conducted, you had to sit in the council chambers to do that. Fortunately nowadays, we have the opportunity for technology. You do not have to sit in this council chamber in order to watch a council meeting or a study session. So, I just want to make sure that we are not in some way marginalizing what current candidates may be doing, to be informed on what's going on in this council chambers.
Okay. John?
Oh, I just want to add that my observation is, I've seen the majority of the candidates out in the audience at previous council meetings. We don't have any in attendance tonight, but several of them have been to multiple meetings, and as the mayor said, a lot of people watch it at home. I'm finding that out when I bumble something and get an email at home.
Any comments? Yes, Yolanda?
I just have to say that I don't know how to say this without coming out negative...
I just have to say that I don't know how to say this without coming out negative. And I have seen this council have already picked and choose a candidate that they want to be deputy mayor in advance. And then when the new council members have come in, they have already automatically chosen who they wanted to be as deputy mayor. Instead of going with what the individuals on the council have done and have been part of and everything, they have chosen somebody that individual wanted right off the bat without allowing that person to even really experience being on the council very long. So that's why I think that it would be best for us, since all seven of us have been together for several years. We all know what we've done. We've all known what we're capable of doing, and be able to choose our deputy mayor before the new council comes in.
Larry? I just, again, with all due respect, I, I reflect on the fact that we're going to have a new council. And the new council is chosen by the citizens and the voters of this city. And I believe seriously that that qualifies them to help make the decision as to who is going to be the deputy mayor. The people that are leaving this council, I don't believe they have that responsibility. It's the new council that I believe should have that responsibility, and those that will be remaining on this council. But again, we could end up with a majority new council. And I believe it's not only appropriate, but it's the right thing for, for all of the new council members that will be serving in the next year to help select the deputy mayor. That's not to say that those that are leaving the council don't have wisdom or couldn't advise, but I think it's the responsibility and the obligation of the new council as determined by the voters of the City of Auburn.
John?
Last comment. Last comment, promise. You know how the citizens of Washington DC object to not having representation in Congress? What's going to happen is the majority, perhaps the majority, of the, the new council won't have a say in who's going to be guiding them. Those of us that are currently on the council but are leaving will be telling them who they have, represent them as deputy mayor. And I think that's patently representation with, or leadership without representation.
Okay. I think we should, I think we probably
Beat that sucker to death.
Beat that sucker. Do you want to say something?
Just under, under your current rules, things get done by consensus, which is currently defined as a collective position of at least a minority. So right now, my, my straw poll is four votes to do it before the end of the year. We had some suggestions about timing, either at the last meeting or two study sessions before. My suggestion there would be, let's the, let's have the language in the rules say not later than the last meeting of the year. That way, deputy mayor and mayor can schedule it out. If you want to schedule it out two study sessions in advance, we can get that on the projected agenda and do it that way without being locked into you have to do it at this time. It gives us a little more flexibility.
Okay, so the consensus here has, has it before the end of the year?
And the other thing that I will just mention, along the lines of we'll have new folks on the council, under your current rules that aren't being changed, is the deputy mayor serves at the pleasure of the council, period. So if there is a wish after the beginning of the year to change that, that's something one of the council members can bring up and we'll be with you.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Next parking lot item is Rule 3N and 3O talk about reading the, so we're on page, pages five and six, six and seven. Talking about page seven, and under ordinances, it talks about ordinances shall be in writing, and titles shall be read aloud by the city attorney. It's not required by state law to ever read a title of an ordinance. I know historically, we have done it when I was here before. We read some things in the title, sort of like the way the deputy mayor reads everything on the consent agenda, although it's not required, in case somebody was listening in but not watching by web stream or something else. So the proposal is, my proposal is that titles may be read aloud. And then the question of who winds up doing it can be whoever wants the entire title read aloud. As a matter of practicality, the presiding officer can just go down the agenda and say the next item is Resolution 2437. And then when they go into a staff report, the staff member can say this is what this resolution or ordinance is about. If a council member wants a title read, they can ask for the title to be read, or they can read it during the motion. I move adoption of 2347, an ordinance of the city council, et cetera, et cetera. I think one of the things, a benefit of having council members or the, or the mayor reading ordinances is it keeps the lawyers keeping the ordinances as short as they can be and still meet state law, where we might instead tend to be a little more wordy, harkening back to what used to get paid by the word. So that's my recommendation for ordinances and resolutions is just say a title may be read. Also, as a little footnote, a council member can ask for an entire ordinance to be read. I've never seen that done in 20 years. I think, I've heard about it once, and the other council members, it was a different city, the other council members immediately voted to overrule that request, because I think it was the budget ordinance, and they wanted the entire budget ordinance read. So that is my suggestion.
Is there a consensus on that, you guys? Yeah, John?
Hey, I, it's somewhat meaningful to me, and perhaps it's just because for the last eight years, the city attorney has always read the short title. I think what is far more important is that the maker of the motion, one of us, goes into the background that explains what that short title is. That way, the short title can remain short as it should be.
What winds up on the agenda is actually the full title of the resolution. That's another issue that I haven't talked about with our city clerks. In other jurisdictions, they don't put the entire title of the resolution on there. They spend some time and narrow it down to basically just the subject of the resolution.
And that, to me, makes a lot of sense. When you go to the legislature and you see the short titles being read by, on the floor. They're, they're not the whole bill, it's the short title. And it's what a bill, or in our case, a resolution or ordinance will be known as. And then the depth of the resolution or the, should be expanded on by the maker of that motion. I'm afraid, and the reason why I am encouraging us not to abandon the reading of the short title is there's too much of a temptation for the maker of the motion to just read, or in our case, reread the short title. And let's face it, we've all done it. You know, we, we haven't done our homework, and we don't expand into the depth of the meaning of the resolution or ordinance. The public deserves to hear our presentation on what the ordinance or resolution is about. And if that short title hasn't already been read and submitted to the public's bruisal, we're really tempted just to, or we may be tempted, I would be tempted, to just read the short title. And that's not fair to the public that are listening. I'd much rather see the short title read by the city attorney, a true short title. And then the motion maker, in our rules, expands on what is the content of that motion or that resolution ordinance is. Claude De Corsi is an excellent person when he expands on the meaning and the intent of that resolution or ordinance. You do your homework really well. And that's my two cents. Any other, any other comments? Yeah, Claude?
I think it's appropriate to maintain the short title, not necessarily, you know, that we need to have it done by the city attorney or maintained by the city attorney. Any one of us can do it. And John, you mentioned, if you listen to the comments of the state legislature, they start reading the title, and then you hear them say, last word. I mean, it's like two words and last word, and that's the whole thing. And, you know, the, the, yeah.
And they do it fast.
They do it fast, yep. And the, you know, the deputy governor, he goes in and just bang, I mean, it's just, it's just that quick. Of course, they presume everybody's read everything ahead of time, and we presume that we've already read everything ahead of time as well. But I, I think it's important to at least have some verbiage in there of a short title. That can be read by the motion maker, it can be read by the mayor. I think we need to just leave it open in our rules of procedure to give the mayor some options as to choosing who reads the short title. And it could be the city attorney, it could be one of us, it could be the mayor. I, I think we need to leave it open to that.
Counsel, any, any further comments?
If it's not broke, don't fix it. And I know, and I know you're trying to get out of work. I know that.
He's kind of right. But there's a reason for it.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what. Staff, staff does an outstanding job putting the agenda bills together and, and further expands on the short title. So there's a lot of good data in that memo. I use it all the time, and I know other council members use it also. So I, I think we ought to just leave it like it is. And I agree with you, John, very few times.
So what is the reason?
Go ahead.
So what is the reason you said that there's a reason for?
Well, one is I just don't like being on camera anymore than I absolutely have to. But the other part of it is, the, the management of the meeting, the reading of legislation is either the duty of the city clerk or it's the prerogative of the presiding officer, manage those meetings. I had a, I sent a little blurb out to the municipal attorneys list, just asking how their cities do that and sharing our tradition to find out the combination of, wow, that's unique, and are you kidding me? We don't want to talk any more than we have to unless we're being asked to give legal advice. So for the most part, it's that, it's, it's usually the legislators or the presiding officer that manages the meeting. If there's a question about the length of the title, in some ways, we can look at what some of the other jurisdictions do, which is to put a brief description of the legislation on the agenda without putting the full title on. Because in many cases, the, the titles are really long, and it doesn't add anything to say, you know, to list out every single section of the municipal code that's being amended. We need to do that because state law requires us to do that in many cases, chapter or section or subsection. But from a council scheduling, management, educating the public point of view, it's legally sufficient to say, this is ordinance number 1234, related to the comprehensive plan, related to development regulations, related to amendments to the transportation improvement program. The presiding officer can very easily do that, and that's what we can put on the agenda. And if there's a more specific question, somebody can read the full thing. To the deputy mayor's point, that short example of what's going on, if we make that shorter and more easy to read, then anybody that is running the meeting can do that.
Okay. Mayor?
Yeah, may I, so to Steve's point, city attorney's not wanting to be on camera anymore than they absolutely have to be. How about if you just take out, so it's already stricken through, thereof shall, and just may be read aloud, strike by the city attorney prior to, and it, then it's up to the presiding officer as to whether they ask the city attorney to do it, they do it themselves, or they ask one of the council members to do it.
And that's the proposed change. It may not be showing up as well in your packets, but that's the proposed change you'll see on the screen. It's like, if I turn off, it's a PDF, so I can't turn off the changes. But that's the way it's written as proposed. All ordinance shall be in writing, titles may be read aloud before the ordinance is voted on. Any council member may request a full reading of the text of a proposed ordinance before the vote on its adoption. The request for a full reading of an ordinance does not need to be voted on, it's just, I'd like that read. And then the next last piece is, however, a request for a reading of the title of a proposed ordinance of a full reading of the text may be waived by a majority of the council members. So that gets back to somebody says, I'd like the budget ordinance read. One of the other council members say, I move, we move, we waive reading, that gets voted on, and then move on. But the, the language as proposed gives us some flexibility. If it turns out that it's clunkier, it doesn't work, of course, we can always go back to the way it was.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Claude? I agree with Mayor, and we kind of said the same thing there. Should this have some statement in there related to the presiding officer? I didn't quite see that in there unless I
It's not specific in there because it's inherent in the duties of the presiding officer.
All right. That's, that's fine then. Okay.
Okay, can you draw this up again for consensus?
Yes. So the language in 3N and the similar language for ordinances in 3O, 3.10, would say, all ordinances shall be in writing, titles may be read aloud before the ordinance is voted on. Any council member may request a full reading of the text of a proposed ordinance before the vote on its adoption. The request for a full reading of an ordinance does not need to be voted on. However, the request for a reading of the title of the proposed ordinance or a full reading of the text of the proposed ordinance may be waived by a majority of the council members in attendance.
Consensus, y'all? Consensus? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Rule 10.2, the subject of 10.2 is public comment, and the balancing of the council's need to manage the meeting properly with the public's First Amendment rights. As a reminder, once you've opened up your meeting to public comment, you can discriminate based on viewpoint. But you have the right and the obligation to manage the con, the, the, the meeting to avoid there being a disturbance or an interruption in the meeting. If anybody had a whole bunch of time, we go through the history of case law about what actually constitutes a disturbance or doesn't constitute a disturbance. But the current language that reads in 10.2, any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks while addressing the council shall be barred from future guide, audience participation by the presiding officer unless permission to continue is granted by a majority of the council. That's the language we currently have. That's language that is similar to other bodies, including regional bodies. What the Ninth Circuit and other federal courts have told us is unless it's actually creating a disruption in the meeting, then regretfully, one of the things you sign up for when you agreed to be elected is a certain amount of being treated not quite kindly. And so what we do is we look at, and there's a whole bunch of different cases. Sometimes people holding up signs doesn't count as a disruption. Somebody making faces in the back may or may not create a disruption. There was one case where somebody sitting in the back of the council chambers and giving a Nazi salute was held by the court to not be a disruption of the meeting. So this, my suggestion is two options. One is we just add some language in to make sure that we all understand and that the public understands while they have a free speech right under a limited public forum as public speaking in a council meeting, that they can't actually disrupt the meeting. So option one is a little more detailed on page 17 of language that I adapted from the City of Seattle. It says, members of the public who, excuse me, actually disrupt the meeting or threaten physical violence may be ordered to leave. And under state law also, you know, the meeting room can be cleared, the council can adjourn the meeting and reconvene. There's provisions in 4230 for doing that. And then one of the things I adapted from, from Seattle to help the presiding officer is disruptions include but are not limited to things that I have in there. Failure to comply with allotted time established. Somebody refuses to leave the dais, that creates a disruption. Outbursts from the member of the public that haven't been recognized, banners or signs that obstruct free passage, we have to comply with the law. The other option is, option two, which is just more succinct, it doesn't give examples. The other option is, option two, which is just more succinct, it doesn't give examples. So, the question for counsel is, uh, but it still says, has to cause actual disruption. And that's the key part under the case law. So, if you think it would be more helpful to have some examples, so in the heat of the moment, while you're presiding over a meeting, you've got some idea of what you're do, what you'd be looking for, I would suggest option one, if you're comfortable with what the disruption is. And also, I have here, up at the dais, I think, we, we actually have developed, along with some other jurisdictions, a script for presiding officers when there's a disruption. So, I'll stop talking now.
I thought you, I thought maybe you were in the courtroom. Larry?
You know, taking a look at the two options, you know, option two specifies hate speech. And I, I kind of like the idea of making that clear, that, uh, that that's caused for disruption. And I've seen that Nazi salute in some proceedings here in the Puget Sound. There's a certain individual that does that. But does not continue on with, you know, condemning, you know, certain classes of people. Just makes the salute and then does the testimony, which usually makes about as much sense as the Hitler salute. But, uh, so I kind of like option two.
Londa?
And I have to agree with you. I think I know who the person is that did that because at one of my meetings, he was there. And what the chair ended up doing is not allowing public speaking. At the very beginning, they stated it towards the end of the meeting. So, this person, when he got up with his sign and his salute, he was escorted out by security. And then we started the meeting again, but that stopped him from coming.
What?
I, I like option two, but I also like the statement under disruptions include but are not limited to the following in relation to the allotted time. I think we should have something, you know, about allotted time in there as well, along with the option two statement.
Okay. So, you want to-
Option two plus allotted time, I can bring that back.
Okay, thank you.
Council members, that was it for the parking lot. Could review all of the stuff that we did before, but my suggestion would be there's, everything else in there was either things that council gave me direction on on the 30th. If there was any language that didn't make sense in there, the rest of it was just me sort of simplifying, clarifying some of the language. Some of the information in there was repeated a couple of different times. For example, the, the description of the agenda items in the council meeting section was duplicated in the description of the agenda items for the study session, and they're the same agenda items in the same order. So, I took the liberty of sort of assuming that if it was described in the council packet, we didn't need to describe it again for the studies. But happy to take direction on those if you have any other questions. If not, and it is your wish, I can bring it back soon.
John? Reasoning behind an abstention will count as a no vote as opposed to the current rule that it is a vote with the prevailing side.
That is a mistype, Rule 9.1. An abstention is always an abstention. And generally, and Anne McFarland was just here last week talking about this. And so, an abstention is always an abstention. If you abstain because of a conflict of interest or an appearance of fairness violation, then the vote could be three in favor, two against, and one abstention. The motion fails because it does not receive a majority. What we're trying to get at in 9.1 is if a council member is silent. Silence is not a deliberate act of abstention because of a conflict of interest. And so, as we talked a little bit about at our last meeting, what we have to balance Roberts' Rules of Order against the state law that says, for an ordinance or something to pass, it requires an affirmative vote of the majority of the council members. And so, we're trying to be very careful to avoid a situation where a council, we don't know what the vote is. It's 3-3 and someone is silent. And since you never want to, under state law, pass something without an affirmative vote, we don't want to count a silence as a no, as a, as a yes vote because it could have the effect of approving a measure that a majority of the council did not mean to approve. The implication in this language is that, and this is sort of consistent with, with Roberts' Rules of Order as well, as council members, unless you have a conflict of interest, you are obligated to vote. And it's the presiding officer with the clerk's help to say, "I, I saw four people say something and two people say something, and I didn't see one of the council members. What is your vote?" And if there's an issue of, "I want to abstain," then we have the conversation under the rules of, "What do you perceive your conflict of interest or violation of the appearance of fairness doctrine to be?" So, that was the change, I typed it wrong. We actually wound up having several conversations before I realized I was talking about the wrong rule and said, "Never mind." Abstention is abstention, silence should not be counted as a yes.
We, we could conceivably end up with a 3-3 because of a abstention, which we don't allow.
Well, we would allow an abstention if there was, for cause, for a conflict.
But just for no cause, you could end up with a 3-3. But then, don't we have a rule that allows the mayor to break the tie?
In certain circumstances, depending on what we're voting about. So, this rule change, plus the additional clarifying language that we talked about last meeting about phrasing motions in the affirmative. So, it's always, "I move to approve something," and then if it fails, it fails. But as opposed to saying, "I move to reject something," because if the motion to reject fails, we don't want to be considered an automatic approval. That's not council's intent. Under state law, you have to affirmatively approve something, not do it by negative implication.
Any other comments, counsel? Any other com, yeah, Todd?
Not on that, I, I do have a comment on 12.1A. Although we have a consensus on the timing of the selection of a deputy mayor, we are coming into what I believe is kind of an unprecedented time with many new council members coming on board. This could not be the last time that that happens. You see, water perhaps two new council members, but in this case, as we mentioned, it could be the majority. I would like to see us consider looking at any member of the city council maybe not nominated for the position of deputy mayor, but having some provision in there to state that a council member must have served on the council for a minimum of one year to be eligible to serve as deputy mayor, to give that council member time to acclimate themselves into the role and to understand their roles as council members before taking that leap into the next, next position. And saying that, because let's say, for example, we do have kind of a stalemate at the end of a year and can't select somebody, and we have to go into the following year. This would give us kind of a provision to say that a new council member has to have that one year of experience before they could be selected as a deputy mayor. So, just my recommendation.
John? Clarification. Do you want that as additional language to everything else that's there? Most senior, never having served before and all those, or do you want that to replace that?
No, I don't want it to replace it, it'd be in addition to, indicating that a new council, a new council member. So, everything related to the seniority, the selection process on A1, A, B, and down through five, you know, that stays. But in the additional item, a council member must have a minimum of one year as a council member before being eligible to be selected as deputy mayor.
Counsel? Comments?
I concur with that. Respectfully, I concur. You're just too respectful tonight.
I'm just very respectful.
Can you summarize that again?
True politician.
What I think we would do is, is in 12.1A, I would add language that says, in the first line, "Any member of the city council who has served for at least one year on the city council may be nominated for the position."
Mayor?
So, let's just give the example that next year, you have three new council members. And you're going to vote on the deputy mayor for the following year before the end of the year. None of those three new council members will have served a year by then and therefore are not eligible to be considered for deputy mayor.
It actually makes it a two-year nomination.
That's correct.
A two-year restriction.
I don't know how to phrase it, but they should be eligible at the end of that year. How we can make that, in other words, they served that current year. And as the selection of-
At the beginning, at the beginning of their service as deputy mayor, must have served a year when they become deputy mayor.
Correct, yes, correct. Yes.
I'm writing that down, thank you. I can do that and bring that back to you with the resolution for approval for your next meeting.
Okay, good. Any other comments, you guys? So, do you have any further comments, Steve?
I do not, thank you for the vigorous policy discussion.
Thank you, appreciate your- Okay, guys, guys and gals. We're going to go to 3C for Charlie. Potential assumption of Auburn Transportation Benefit District. Engineering and-
Good evening. So, we've had this conversation a few times before, but we thought it was appropriate to bring back additional conversation just around the assumption related to the Transportation Benefit District. So, as a little bit of background, City of Auburn created the Transportation Benefit District in 2011. In 2015, the legislature changed the law that allows the TBD to actually be assumed by the city as long as the boundaries of the TBD in the county and the city are the same boundaries, which is the case for Auburn. It would allow the city to assume all the rights, powers, functions, and obligations that the TBD has. And it would make the TBD cease to exist as a separate entity, which as we move into next year with potentially new council members, we think that that might be a simplification of some of the process so you don't have the separate TBD meetings and council meetings and trying to keep those separated and everybody following along on what the roles and responsibilities are of those two different entities. And in looking through MRSC's information, as of March of this year, there's about 109 municipal TBDs that have been created. Eighty-one of those have been assumed by the city, so about 75%. So, what are the steps to assume the TBD? It's actually actions done by the council, not necessarily the TBD. So, there's a resolution that needs to be passed by the council between the municipal public hearing and the grid. And then, holding the public hearing, and then actually passing the ordinance that would, if it satisfies the public interest and/or welfare for the city, the council passes the ordinance as well as code changes to modify the code that was put in place in 2011 related to the Transportation Benefit District. The other thing that would change is, is we would need to do one final annual financial report for the TBD for 2019.
So, just a quick recap on what the difference between having the TBD as a separate entity versus being assumed by the city is the bonding capacity differences. So, as a TBD, there is an additional 5% bonding capacity, but that's $570 million compared to, as being part of the city, it would have the city's bonding capacity at $285 million. For comparison purposes, we only have $52 million bonded right now. So, really, even with the city's existing bonding capacity, it's not realistic to assume that the TBD would ever try to leverage even the maximum amount that the city has. We just don't have the funding sources available to pay the debt service even at $285 million. For comparison purposes, the, the 2.2% sales tax voted levy that the city could potentially do with the TBD authority, that would only generate about $4.2 million annually to pay for any additional bonds that we'd want to issue. And taking that into consideration, we have plenty of councilmatic bonding authority on the city's side to be able to do that if we did absorb the TBD as part of the city. So, just talking, I mean, that's the primary difference bonding capacity-wise, whether or not the TBD was a separate entity or assumed as part of the city. Really, the, the biggest changes are the benefits. The financial reporting doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be done separately. It can be done as part of the city's annual financial report. And like Ingrid had mentioned earlier, it eliminates the need to have a sep, a separate board. It can all be managed by the city council, so.
One point of clarification on this, so the annual debt services that are listed there, those are based on a 20-year?
Yeah, 20-year, 20-year debt service cycle. Just to give you an idea of what those annual debt service amounts would look like if we did bond the total amount allowed by the TBD versus the city.
And the 0.2% sales tax that you could do under the TBD's authority is only for a 10-year period when it's voted in by the public.
So, you'd have to go back a second time to get that 0.2% voted again and approved.
So, to give you an idea of scale. Any questions? Okay, so, next step. So, obviously, staff are recommending that the city move forward with an assumption of the TBD. And so, right now, we've tentatively scheduled the resolution. There's a draft in your packet of that resolution to be reviewed and considered by the council on next Monday's meeting and then holding the public hearing and consideration of the ordinance at the November 18th meeting.
Counsel, questions?
I would concur with this process, the change.
Consensus, guys? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Now, we'll go to ordinance 6733 Shoreline Master Plan.
All right, well, good evening. Amy Gop, Senior Planner with the Department of Community Development. And I have a moral support with me tonight, Jeff Dixon, Planning Services Manager. So, I'm here with you to, tonight, to present the Planning Commission's recommended changes to the city's Shoreline Master Program, or SMP, and the Critical Areas Ordinance, or CAO. So, I know there's a lot of information and pages in the packet, especially for my portion here. So, these are some summary slides that highlight the key points. These slides are not included in your packet. The pages that this presentation covers begin on page 60 of your packet. So, the Planning Commission began review of the, of these changes back in July of 2018. And in all, their, the Planning Commission held 10 separate meetings. These culminated in a public hearing that was held on October 8th, where the Planning Commission recommended the city council adopt the proposed changes. The, the final drafts of the proposed changes and a public notice was provided to a long list of outside agencies, including the Muckleshoot Tribe, Puyallup Tribe, et cetera. And then, since this was a, this notice was a joint public notice with the Department of Ecology, it had an extended period. So, typically, our comment periods are 14 days per code, but since we did a joint notice, it was actually a 30-day notice. And in the end, we didn't receive any comments. So, to start off with, the SMP applies to properties that are located within 200 feet of the Green and White Rivers. And so, how does this come about? Well, the Shoreline Management Act was originally passed by the legislature in- Well, the Shoreline Management Act was originally passed by the legislature in nineteen seventy-one, then eventually adopted by voters in seventy-two to protect both fresh and saltwater shorelines in the state. Uh, the SMA was also set up to be a shared or joint responsibility between the city and the Department of Ecology. State Department of Ecology. Um, the SMA requires the city to review and update its SMP based on changes in state laws and rules. In this case, it's, that have happened since 2009. Um, and so, the, the SMP itself is one of the few documents that, uh, the state reviews and will make comments, and then they're the final approval body, um, for that. So, in this case, it'd be the Department of Ecology. Um, it was during one of these initial reviews that Ecology notified the city that the Critical Areas Ordinance, um, also required updates, uh, in order for the SMP to be approved. I'll go over those Critical Areas changes in, uh, just a few minutes. Um, the changes recommended by the planning commission include, uh, items that were identified as out of date during the initial review of the SMP, um, as well as, uh, kind of the, the major change. The only major change would be adding what's called a modest home provision to the SMP. Um, so with the modest home provision, it would allow for construction of a, a single-family home with a limited building area that may normally require a more involved building process. So, this would apply to vacant, non-conforming lots in the city, meaning lots that would essentially require a variance in order to be built on, and by allowing a reduced setback in that, um, limited building area. So, um, I'll try to go through this image here and hopefully this, uh, explains it, uh, what the provision would do. So, uh, you have a property on the river that was created most likely before the SMA was even enacted. And it's not large enough to meet the typical hundred-foot setback required by the shoreline code, or the SMP. Um, so in this example, you would look, to determine the, uh, the reduced setback, you would look at the two adjacent lots, um, or adjacent existing houses, and then draw a line connecting the two. It'll be straightforward. And then this would give you your new setback line. As you can see, that there's quite a bit of difference. This is obviously just a schematic drawing, but, uh, it would, uh, you know, make it a lot easier for, or less, public hearings or processes that someone would need to go to where they could normally build a single-family house, if it was a lot that was created after the Shoreline Management Act. And then here's just a, a shot of a, a lot along the Green River that almost fits this example to a T, where it's a lot that was created in the fifties, I think, and, uh, essentially do the modest home provision as an alternative to building a, or going through the shoreline variance process. So, earlier I mentioned the state is also requiring the city to make updates to the Critical Areas Ordinance, which is part of the city code as opposed to the SMP, which is a separate governing document. The planning commission's recommended updates, uh, include the regulations that are shown on your list here. And I went into a little bit more in-depth than the memo. Hopefully, that helped. And then in the, uh, the next following slides, I'll go over those, the major updates that apply to wetlands, streams, their buffers, and then critical aquifer recharge areas. Um, so, to start off this, so why do we care about wetlands and, and wetland buffers? In general, wetlands perform three main functions: stormwater storage and groundwater recharge. They remove pollutants and they provide plant and animal habitat. Uh, they also provide open space for citizens of Auburn, uh, which are all important things for the city. So, uh, what about wetland buffers? Buffers are one of the most critical things for maintaining wetlands and their functions, and the width of the buffer is the, uh, one of the most important factors. So, as you can see from this slide, the city is, uh, several years behind adopting the recommendations from Ecology. And, uh, most neighboring jurisdictions, uh, did their updates back in, uh, 2015 or shortly after the, um, Ecology came out with their, uh, updated scient- science. Uh, the width of the updated butler, buffers will vary depending on what function that they're trying to protect. For instance, the widths needed for water quality protection are much less so than for habitat protection. Um, the, the width is determined first by the category of the wetland, category one being the highest, and, uh, category four being four of the lowest. And then by what function or functions that the wetland, uh, provides. Uh, so this is a screenshot of the table from page one ninety in your packet. Um, this is the, uh, wetland table. So, the, the wetland table, or the wetland category are on the left-hand side, uh, of the table with category one, as I said, being the highest reading. Uh, the middle section would be the buff- buffer width ranges if what's called minimization measures, uh, that are shown on pages one ninety and one ninety-one are implemented. These minimization measures will more likely to not always be used as they're fairly common for, uh, instance, instituted stormwater controls, which is already required by the state and the city. The section on the right are the buffer ranges if those minimization measures are not implemented. Uh, most of the wetlands that we see as, uh, planners during, uh, development review, they would fall into the category three section. So, for instance, in this, the, um, buffer ranges would go from currently being twenty-five to fifty feet, and then change to sixty all the way up to three hundred feet. Um, with most, most, what, most of the wetlands that we see probably fall within the low habitat score of a sixty-foot buffer, as shown in the, the table there. But, but there are, um, areas that may qualify as medium or high habitat, especially in, potentially in areas of the valley or re-hill, west hill that are undeveloped. To, typically to qualify as a, the higher, um, higher habitat, with a higher habitat score, it needs to be an extended area of, uh, native wetland areas. And pretty limited within the city for those, but there is still the possibility. Um, so, in all, yes, these new wetland buffers, they'll be, uh, larger than we see now. Also noting that developers, uh, they've been benefiting from these, uh, reduced buffers for several years now. And adoption of these, uh, updated or new standards would be, would provide consistency between Auburn, neighboring jurisdictions, and, uh, or state law. And lastly, and as I mentioned on the previous side, the ecology requirements came about in 2014, with most neighboring jurisdictions having already completed these updates. And updating these, uh, buffers to the proposed ranges is one of the required steps in getting the SMP approved by Ecology. So, stream buffers, uh, they act in the same way as wetland buffers. They help prevent, um, pollutants from reaching the stream. They act as habitat areas, and they help to reduce flood damage. Uh, so this, this table is a screenshot. It's on page one ninety-two, slash one ninety-three. Sorry, kind of broke the page there, but, um, in your packet. It shows the buffer widths that are recommended by the planning commission for, uh, streams. The widths shown in the table are at the lower end of the ranges recommended by best available science from the Department of Ecology. However, they will still provide adequate widths for, to protect the resources, like, protect the streams. Uh, these are all, these buffers are also fairly consistent with what neighboring jurisdictions have, have adopted. Just note that the, uh, the class one or type S now, that those streams are regulated by the SMP Shoreline Master Program. And they either have a one hundred or two hundred-foot buffer slash setback depending on which shoreline designation they're located in. So, unlike wetlands, there isn't a, there's not a common stream type that we see in the city. Um, even a single stream could have, uh, multiple classifications on it depending on where it is in the landscape. So, I got a, uh, example here. So, for instance, this is, uh, a portion of Mullen Slough that begins on the west hill and then travels downhill, um, and north towards South Two Eighty-Seventh Street. The downhill portion of the stream, uh, which is in yellow, is classified as a type F, which means a fish-bearing stream. Uh, where the uphill portion, uh, in purple, uh, is considered NP, which means it's a stream that flows year-round, but it doesn't have fish. In this case, there is a significant gray change that fish can't swim up, can't, can't make it up. And then, just for reference, the type NS stream at the bottom there is a stream that doesn't have fish and may or may not flow year-round, so an intermittent stream, other name, another word for it. The final area is that-
We have a question. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
When you're, uh, talking about all these areas, we have all these maps here. Do these maps go with what you're describing?
Yes, so the map-
Have different colors of buffers and stuff?
So, the, the maps that you have there, those are part of the, the Shoreline Master Program. So, those are essentially like the zoning maps for the shoreline. So, there's three categories. There's urban conservancy, residential, and natural. So, those don't, those don't apply to the Critical Areas Ordinance portion.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know there.
Sorry for not clarifying that. So, okay, so the, the final area that the Department of Health is requiring to be updated are the regulations that apply to critical aquifer recharge areas, formerly called groundwater protection areas. This one's, uh, pretty, pretty, um, simple to understand. Currently, the city's code only applies wellhead protection, uh, regulations to city-owned wells. The changes recommended by the planning commission would make the wellhead protection areas or aquifer recharge areas apply to the, of the sixteen other shared slash public, uh, well systems that have their, um, protection areas located wholly or partially within the city. I put a couple of examples up there that people might recognize, Lake, for instance, Lake Haven, uh, or Logan Dale, which is near that, uh, picture of the stream that we had up there. And with that, that concludes my summary of the planning commission's recommended changes to the SMP and Critical Areas Ordinance.
Questions, council? Oh, John.
More of a statement than a question. The planning commission did the lion's share of work on this, uh, over half a year. I'd like to make sure that they're thanked for their, uh, their due diligence in this. And I'd be in favor of us, uh, taking this to, uh, council and passing it.
Yeah, I will note the planning commission was, yeah, they did a lot of work. And it was actually, uh, uh, July twenty eighteen is when we started, so over, you know, almost a year and a half. And they were patient with staff as we had to work with the Department of Ecology and Department of Health and, um, everyone and get all those proposed changes. So, we feel appreciate that.
Huge, uh, huge undertaking. I can see why we put it off as long as we did.
Questions, council? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're gonna go into item four, which is finance. And I'm gonna release the gavel. Where is the gavel? I don't know where it is. To Mr. Holman.
Mr. Paulson.
Deputy Mayor.
Could we have a break?
Say what?
Could we have a break? A few minutes?
A break? Yeah, you want a two-minute break? Five minutes, five minutes. Five minutes break, you guys.
All right, all right. Four minutes and forty-five seconds. Stiff in your old age. Lady of the world.
You're a brute. She's in, uh, Washington. Visiting our daughter.
And it's gonna be a little chilly tomorrow.
No kidding?
She'll be back election night. It's fun. That's what I do.
Little doughnut, doughnut.
It's actually, I have it up on the carpet that was from last meeting. Hey, Bill. Absolutely. Can we reschedule that?
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm sorry about today. I was-
Yeah, I, I did write you back.
I was in bed.
I heard, I heard, and I could see if I Joyce didn't have any. She didn't, oh, I was gonna take right now.
I never received your response to my email.
I did send it.
Oh, you did.
Look at her, here, please. She just said, uh, I gave the time. It's all right. Find it on the, how many, when you feel as well.
Okay, thank you.
I know, that's why I call.
I don't dare drink coffee.
You know, I used to say at dinner that to me, but here lately, all of a sudden, I'm not sleeping until two, three o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
My clock is going off and I'm ready to go. I haven't gone to bed yet. So, I only drank half of this.
Okay, that's it. We'll see how that works.
And I'm drinking water.
Oh, yeah, that helps.
Okay, the meeting will come back to order. Solid Waste Contract Procurement. Four A and Mr. Holman will be orchestrating this.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I'm Brenda Vincent-More. I'm the Utility Billing Manager. And Joan Nelson, the Utility Billing and Solid Waste Supervisor. Um, and we just wanted to go over the timeline for the, um, Solid Waste Contract RFP. So, it's kind of a rough timeline for a contract that will start October 1st of 2021.
Questions, Council? Hearing none. Thank you, guys.
We wagered around the bill.
Good night.
We applaud.
2019 Auburn Tourism Update. I have a fortune cookie that says this is going to be a good presentation.
I like that.
Good evening, Council. My name is Tanya Carter, and I am in the Department of Administration. I work in the Economic Development Department. I am responsible, Division, I am responsible for the retention and expansion, for marketing of business programs as well as tourism and tourism strategy currently while we are in interim for tourism coordinator. So, tonight, I wanted to present to you an update on 2019, where we're at. You all have a presentation in front of you, but the presentation that I have is the same one, it's just a little bit more interactive, so it might provide a little bit more clarity to what we're talking about. And just to maintain brevity, I will also read from my notes to keep to the time. So, first up is just a little conversation about laying the groundwork. So, one of the questions is, how do we decide what happens each year in tourism? So, every year, the Auburn Tourism Board develops the next year's annual tourism plan at one of our monthly meetings in Q4 along with city representatives. And so, there are three, the foundation of the plan is essentially set around three roles that tourism plays. So, the first role is lead generation, the second role is destination awareness, and the third role is providing tourism resources. So, after the plan is drafted, it's presented to the LTAC Board, so the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and they approve the proposed plan and the budget at the second of their two annual meetings. So, after it's approved, the plan and the budget is then brought before City Council, and it's improved for implementation the next year. So, one of the things that we wanted to point out this year, as you'll see in your packet, is who actually contributes to these plans, because there's a lot of thought and strategy that goes behind it, and so, we wanted to also recognize and let you know who is involved in all of the different teams. So, the first one is the Auburn Tourism Board, and in your packet, you can see as well on the screen who all of the team members are on the team. So, currently, we have eight tourism board members. We have two that have also applied, so ideally, if those two are approved by you, then we will have ten total. And of those ten, we actually have three that would be hotels, so we're really excited. We hope that we will have a full board, which will be great, and three of those members will be hotels, which also are contributing to the funds. So, the other team that also is helping and is instrumental in this process is the LTAC Board, the Lodging Tax and Advisory Committee, and there are seven members on there with Mayor Baxus, who is also the chairperson. So, finally, then, everything is approved by the Council. So, moving along to the more exciting things that we do, essentially, there are four main tourism strategies that the teams landed on, and these four strategies will carry us through for the next several years. So, the first strategy is developing tourism demand generators. The second strategy is improving and enhancing the visitor experience. The third strategy is strengthening tourism partnerships, and the last one is developing tourism assets. So, these four are forming kind of the core of what all of the activities are that are determined and decided on every year. So, essentially, if you think of it kind of like a waterfall, whatever the tourism strategies are, those activities that are created should all ultimately roll up to one of the strategies, and that's kind of a check and balance system so that we know that whatever activities or whatever money that we're investing in is also accomplishing the, one of the four strategies that we focus on. So, now, the fun part. So, as we mentioned, our first strategy is creating tourism demand generators. So, you might actually kind of want to know, what does that mean in tourism? So, some of the examples are of tourism demand generation is attending trade shows, encouraging regional and national events to be held in Auburn, promoting local events while encouraging overnight stays, which of course encourages tourists to spend and explore Auburn, as well as promoting our local hotels. So, something that I hope all of you were able to at least hear about, but hopefully attend, is the Auburn Adventure Film Festival. So, this was our inaugural year of the film festival, and it welcomed eight adventure film blocks, and in total, over the three-day period, we had triple-digit attendance, and we also generated a lot of buzz on social media. So, we had a lot of people that were coming through town, which also encouraged, you know, restaurants, shopping, things like that. We also had a lot of social media, which also put Auburn out into the digital space so that people become aware of our name and what we offer. The second was a create your own adventure ad campaign, and essentially, our shoulder, this is our shoulder season ad campaign, and this ad campaign, over a three-month period from December to February, served over a million impressions to a geo-targeted audience. So, some of the key things that that helped was, it helped build awareness, of course, for Auburn, and it also encouraged hotel stays, which, as we know, is a great tourism generator. The next on the list was our tourism grant program, and once again, our program demonstrated that even with a few small grants of a few thousand dollars, we could help support several events that attracted anywhere from 500 to several thousand visitors each. So, a few notable ones, which I'm sure everyone is aware of, is Pet Palooza, another one is Hops and Crops, and another one is the Parrot Expo. So, these have all become really regionally-known events and are pretty exciting to go see if you haven't had a chance to go see any of those. Another really interesting and very creative tourism demand generator this year is actually thanks to a discussion while our economic development manager was on an overseas delegation to Ireland. And our Auburn incubator is now partnered with Dog Patch Labs, which is an incubator startup in Ireland. So, what does that mean for Auburn? It actually means that when any of the startups in Dog Patch Labs are interested in coming to the US to kind of explore maybe some expansion into North American market, they are now welcomed at our Auburn incubator, which is just across the street, and they are welcome to stay here for a limited time, and what the hotels also are offering are extended hotel stay packages. So, it's a great opportunity for us to really create some relationships with our overseas business partners. Something else that's really exciting is the Seattle Sports Commission. So, the city now has a commission seat on the Seattle Sports Commission, whose goal is to make the Seattle metropolitan area a world-class sports destination with events like the Pac-12 Conference Women's Basketball and NCAA Division One Women's Volleyball Championships. So, our seat on the commission will allow us to have a voice when the commission negotiates with sporting events in the future. The impending opening of Field House, which is a new 150,000-square-foot facility at the Outlet Collection, was the main driver behind the decisions, and so, it's something that we're really excited about because that will really help to put Auburn on the map and really help support the efforts of Field House in attracting world-class and national events here to Auburn. So, yep?
Yeah. So, I understand that the United States has been awarded the 2026 World Cup, is that correct? Are you, is that on your radar?
It's not on my radar yet, but I'd be happy to follow up with it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, in my day job, they're asking us to promote the idea of building facilities for the World Cup, which is usually something that happens for these, but it's like the entire United States, but we would want this region to, you know, be one of the areas where the regional, right, soccer, world soccer is what it's about. So, anyway, something to, maybe we talk about that at some subsequent time.
Absolutely. I think that's a great question, and we'd be happy to look into it.
Yes, I've never heard of Dog Patch Lab. What is that?
You're gonna make me talk about you.
Oh, no, it's okay.
It is an accelerator incubator program that is underwritten by the Irish government. It's very large, very active. It has, I think right now, today, they have about 200 startups and about 400 members. It's a 40,000-square-foot facility. And what they do is similar to what we do in the incubator, but in a much smaller way. They work with them to write a business plan, get themselves prepared to launch as a business, but their facility is sophisticated enough, they actually are an accelerator, actually are into business, they're in the facility. So, the idea is that there's a lot of companies there that feel that they can bring their product to North America or to the US, and so, we've worked out a deal with them that if somebody from our incubator would, excuse me, would want to try to bring a product to Europe, for example, our biodigester company that just won the King County Small Business Award, if they wanted to push that product into the European market, they'd be welcome to come to that incubator, use their office space, they would be there on a scholarship for 90 days, and it gives them an opportunity to try to enter into the European market, and they will work with them and help them. If one of their companies would want to come here, we would do the same thing with the idea that we would be able to work with them locally, put our hooks into them, per se, and hopefully, if they do make an entry into our market in the Pacific Northwest, that they would house themselves and become, call Auburn home at that point.
How many spaces do we have left in our incubator?
Well, ours is a co-work space, so it's, you know, how many, we've got 18 chairs in there, so I guess you could have 18, 19 of them in there at any one time. That never happens, but our capacity over there is maybe 22 to 25 startups. I think right now, we have 13. We had a couple leave, they felt they were ready to swim in the river, and so, I think at one time, we had 17 in there. So, it fluctuates based on what their needs are. So, that's what it is. It's basically a very low-impact cooperative agreement, and it gives us an opportunity to get our hands on startups with foreign direct investment.
Thank you.
DogPatchLabs.com has a pretty robust website. If you want to dig in a little deeper into it.
Pretty amazing place.
Great. So, kind of rounding up the tourism demand generators, we welcomed a new 120-room hotel this year, which I'm sure all of you have seen and hopefully had a chance to stop by. And the exciting thing about this is that it provides another class of hotels to our business and leisure travelers, so we're really happy to welcome Holiday Inn into Auburn. The other exciting bit of news is that the same owners group is also working on opening up a Hilton here in the downtown core. We don't have any further information on what the actual plan is currently, but we will absolutely keep you updated on that as we find out more. So, moving on to improving our visitor experience. To tourism, improving the visitor experience means making travel to and travel within the city easier, providing intuitive materials to navigate around, as well as translating collateral we produce into various languages, or addressing feedback that we receive from tourists. So, this year, we wanted to highlight two of the really exciting programs that we executed. This year, we worked really hard to improve both local residents' and visitors' experience while traveling to and from the White River Amphitheater Concert Series. So, we developed a partnership with Harlow's Bus Company, and Harlow's actually made buses available to concert-goers to attend and return from the concert, starting from Emerald Downs. So, there was more than ample parking, there was more than ample space for cars to come and go, and the buses went to the concert series, they were given priority access to and from the venue, which of course, in turn, was decreasing traffic, so that really helped to decrease the congestion. And the other really nice aspect was that after hours, Emerald Downs had several venues that were still open, and so, it was really nice if someone wanted to have, you know, a late-night dinner or meet with some friends after the concert, so that was also available to them while their cars were still parked safely at Emerald Downs. The other that we wanted to highlight just briefly, as we mentioned before in the BIA presentation, was that since its inception last year, this tourism app, which you all have a copy of, has actually almost all but replaced all of the marketing collateral that we provide for hotels. So, they find that it is very intuitive for their visitors, they find that there's also a website on there if any of the visitors want more information on any businesses, and it's now in its second year of printing, so I think it's definitely going to be a mainstay here in Auburn.
Go on.
When did you start the bus trips? And how did you advertise that? Because I had never heard of that.
So, we had, it was a little bit more informal last year. This year, it was much more formalized and structured, and the advertising was mainly on the, through word-of-mouth on some of our posts on ExploreAuburn.com, which is our tourism website, as well as Live Nation, and the hotels were also promoting it to their hotel guests. So, essentially, when the hotels, you know, knew that there were concert-goers that were booking at their hotels, they would share that information with them so that they would...
Is there a cost for them to get on the bus?
Yeah, there was a minimal cost.
It was $25.
Yeah, it was $25. Correct. Yeah.
That's pretty good. The reason why I say it's pretty good, because I live up there in the congestion right now with them building the hotel up there and everything, takes me forever to get out of my road to get into Auburn Way, and it's, we don't need the congestion up there with the concerts.
We hope to expand it in the next year, so we'll definitely keep you updated on that.
Good, thank you.
Sure. So, next is strengthening partnerships, and essentially, what that means is jointly promoting kiosks in a way that leverages multiple partner strengths and therefore reduces the cost of promotion. So, a couple of points. Here, we actually had a partnership with Emerald Downs, and the partnership enabled Explore Auburn to have an entire webpage dedicated to Explore Auburn and all of the activities that Auburn has to offer. The exciting thing about this is we were able to access a new kind of category of tourists or visitors to Auburn that wouldn't normally seek out the ExploreAuburn.com website. So, in this way, we were able to capitalize on all of the visitors and website visitors as well to the Emerald Downs website and keep them updated and informed so that they knew that if they were coming to an event at Emerald Downs, there was ample opportunity for them to bring their family, to have some activities before and after, and even to catch a bite to eat or check out some sites. And also, coming back to our fairs and events, something that you all may have seen throughout the year at the Farmer's Market or at various events like the Street Festival, is that we have what we call tabling. And so, what tabling means is that we have a table that's available for tourists when they attend any of these events or residents, and they have interactive games that they can learn about anything that's happening in Auburn, they receive fortune cookies and actually samples of the coasters like you see on your table there. So, the other place that you may have seen coasters is in one of our many establishments here in Auburn, so we are replenishing on a regular basis a core of the establishments here with our coasters. If you ever hear of any establishments that are interested in the coasters, we're more than happy to provide them for them. So, there are five different themes, and they're all themes that are related to something in Auburn, as well as on the back, it drives people to kind of... So in this way, we were able to capitalize on all of the visitors and website visitors as well to the Emerald Downs website and keep them updated and informed, so that they knew that if they were coming to an event at Emerald Downs, there was ample opportunity for them to bring their family, to have some activities before and after, and even to catch a bite to eat or check out some sites. And also, coming back to our fairs and events, something that you all may have seen throughout the year at the farmer's market or at various events like the Street Festival, is that we have what we call tabling. And so what tabling means is that we have a table that's available for tourists when they attend any of these events or residents, and they have interactive games that they can learn about anything that's happening in Auburn, they receive fortune cookies, and actually samples of the coasters like you see on your table there. So the other place that you may have seen coasters is in one of our many establishments here in Auburn, so we are replenishing on a regular basis a core of the establishments here with our coasters. If you ever hear of any establishments that are interested in the coasters, we're more than happy to provide them for them. So there are five different themes, and they're all themes that are related to something in Auburn, as well as on the back, it drives people to kind of pique their curiosity and see what's happening on the Explore Auburn website. And then the last one.
I'm sorry, I had to laugh.
Mine is the golf course, and I drew a little dot where my ball winds up, it's in the water.
So I had to laugh.
The last, the last thing that I wanted to draw your attention to was that several new venues are immediately opening in Auburn, as we've mentioned before, Field House, the Holiday Inn, the Hilton, as well as the Muckle Shoots Conference Center. So we are partnering with all of these different venues to create tourism packages that are both digital and print for all of the many visitors that will be coming to these venues in the future. The last one, of course, is the BIA partnership with the map, which we've mentioned before. Finally, developing our tourism assets. So I think these are, the two points that we wanted to highlight here are kind of some exciting developments. This year, we commissioned a hotel absorption study. So when the team commissioned this absorption study, it revealed that Auburn can still absorb up to 200 rooms in the mid-scale hotel room space. So this is good news for Auburn and potential hotel developers, since the study paves the way for really constructive discussions and dialogues, because there was extensive research done on how, when, why, and where a hotel would be beneficial to be developed here in Auburn. The other, oops, the other exciting piece of information is that our Tourism Package Initiative, which has been discussed several times this year, is becoming more concrete. And the tourism team desires to build on the success of the stay-and-play packages that we had last year, and create packages that include things like brewery tours and hotel stays, historic tours and hotel stays. So these are all ways that we can encourage visitors to come and stay and play in Auburn with really specific, you know, packages that are prepackaged for them, so there's less effort that they need to expend on their part, but have a really nice, very typical Auburn experience while they're staying at hotels here. So we'll definitely keep you updated on that as things progress. Finally, for 2020 and beyond, essentially, there were two points that we just wanted to bring to your attention here. The first is that the tourism team has invested a lot of time in reviewing what works and what can be improved as it relates to strategies and results. So the points above here on the screen represent the areas that we're focusing on, and with this more strategic direction, we're now set in the future to better invest funding into initiatives, as well as identify more concrete metrics and analyses in order to help manage the investment of our resources better. So again, we look forward to sharing a lot of these with you in the coming months. Finally, what we now, the other area that we plan to focus on in 2020 is engaging more with our regional audiences. And this is as opposed to our local, national, and international, not to say that we are not going to focus on those areas, but we really feel like, because there's been such a tremendous regional population growth from visitors and tourists from out of the state, that we really want to capitalize on the fact that we can make a smaller financial investment and accomplish greater awareness with these people, rather than spreading our investment out to a much wider net, when we really have a higher concentration here that's moved into the area. So two examples that we wanted to share with you that we're investigating are Scenic Washington. So Scenic Washington is where we'd like to investigate showcasing Auburn to the over 1 million annual visitors that visit that website and the state of Washington per year. The other place that we're focusing on is certified distribution. So I'm sure all of you have seen in our lobby, or you've seen in hotels, or you've seen even on the ferries, that there are these kiosks that you can actually fund brochures on various cities around Washington State. So the interesting thing about that is that it's a very reasonable investment, and just as kind of a side note for relativity, there are over 20 million people that ride the ferries every year. So showcasing Auburn in brochures in these kiosks would be a really great opportunity to not only highlight Auburn to commuters, residents, but also visitors from out of state and outer country. So that kind of wraps things up for us. Are there any other questions on our update?
Questions, council?
Did everyone see your fortune and your Auburn fortune cookie? So they're all themed, they're all themed little stories about Auburn, which encourage people to go to our Explore Auburn website.
People are naturally attracted to Seuss Creek Botanical Gardens.
That's what mine said too. Exactly what yours said.
We had eight different scenes.
Thank you for your attention.
This is, this is more than exciting. This really kind of sets the stage in promoting our thriving community, but we've always talked about Auburn being the destination, not just to travel through. rapidly becoming the destination. Look at bringing like the Field House in for perhaps world-class events. I didn't realize we would have a facility that had world-class events.
It'll be the largest indoor event facility, it'll be the largest of its kind on the West Coast.
It's fantastic, you know, we've been bringing these businesses in that haven't existed in the West Coast before, and they're here in Auburn, and just to kind of show that level of commitment from these businesses and what they believe we can do as a community is just more than exciting. So great job for you guys, and looking forward to the future.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your attention.
Thanks for your time. Okay, I pass the virtual gavel back to Deputy Mayor Poulos. All right. Was there any other discussion, items, new business from the council? There's a time to go out. Okay, so we'll go to the matrix then, everybody. And looking, looking at the council matrix, we have a couple of TBDs, we have an ongoing, and we have two reviews for November 25. Does the council have any additions or deletions? Mayor, do you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Okay. So hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.